Call a special board of trustees meeting to order. And if we could all stand for pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual but liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. And if we could do a roll call.
Maloney.
Here.
Sagami.
Here.
Cronin.
Here.
Ermeling.
Here.
Hardinger.
Here.
Pincel.
Present.
Wyland.
And public comments? I don't think there's any public comments. Um, okay, and we're gonna move into a closed session. And but then come back out into open session. And this closed session, I'm gonna ask just for the board. On two different issues, it won't be long. It'll be, I hope, rather quickly. But just a little homework and stuff that we have to figure out, it's not all on one issue, it's on. Uh, the B and C issue too, so. Uh, hopefully it'll be pretty quick. Okay? So I'm gonna move to close, close session per Wisconsin Stat nineteen point eight five, parent one, parent E. Delivering deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds. Or conducting, conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session to win. Discuss property located at fifty five hundred Schofield Avenue. Discuss the police department staffing. Discuss intergovernmental study and advisement agreement with the village of Rothschild.
So moved.
Oh, yes, uh, motion by Cronin.
Second.
Second by Pincel. Roll call vote.
Maloney.
Yes.
Sagami.
Yes.
Cronin.
Yes.
Ermeling.
Yes.
Hardinger.
Yes.
Pincel.
Yes.
Wyland.
Yes.
Yes. We are now in closed session. Um, yeah, attorney E D, we want him in here. So there is, there is one action that's gonna uh. Happen here, uh, but to address fifty five hundred Schofield Avenue. Um, I am gonna announce that uh, we are gonna, the previous action. Of denial stands and uh, the village will move forward. Let's see, um, uh, putting the property back up for sale. And um. Uh, raising the area, raising all the buildings, uh, turning it into a, a green space for sale. But uh, the previous motion uh, that for denial stands. That's what's gonna happen, yes Gary?
Can I ask a question? What? Why is you wishing maybe motion for this to go through and be stalled?
Uh, that was initially on nine eleven, nine twenty eight. It was done again with after some discussion. And then that motion was actually Barb. Um, and then um, I, I really, I don't have other minutes in front of me, but I have those two sets of minutes in front of me. Um, but until it got to a developmental agreement and it was on paper and signed. It's not done. So.
So, so can I ask what, 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 what happened? What happened through all of this, uh, you, you, uh, turned this down the second time?
But you.
I'm sorry?
You turned this down the second time? But you made a motion to do it the first time, to approve it.
Well, I didn't agree with the developer agreement.
So, you know, how about if, how about if I just talk for the board and then individually, no, 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 you can certainly talk if you want. But um, instead of naming certain people that did what?
Oh, I was just asking.
No, I, I'm just. Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna try to answer it, I'm gonna try to answer it. So from nine eleven, from that initial five million dollars, uh, one hundred thousand dollar um, uh, motion.
Three million?
Uh, no, five, it was actually five, I have it in the minutes in open session. On nine twenty eight, well, that's, that's where some of the hiccups came. You know, no, I, I don't wanna do it that, I want an extra year to do it this way. Um, so there was quite a bit of changes in that next month. Alright, then from that month. Uh, I remember, uh, well, some of the buildings, we could keep some of the buildings and we could beautify them and stuff, and I think some of the anxiety, some of the heartache on the board was. Um, that's, originally, they wanted everything gone. That's what they wanted. And originally, that's what we talked about. But then as it kept developing, you know, no, there's gonna be a couple of buildings, I mean, I remember one conversation that, you know, I could keep the salt shed maybe. Well, the salt shed would have to go in my mind and the rest of the board too, you know, they, you know, we agreed on some of the stuff and then. We kept going back that, you know, we want this gone, we want this gone, out of here. You know, the, the three phases would work out fine. Um, some of the ideas that you had were good. And uh. But um. This thing get, kept getting kicked down the street. In, in my view, and I.
I'll just ask a question, how did it get kicked down the street? I never was in the buildings until.
Gary, Gary, um, I, I'll just speak for myself, I was on the phone with you for forty five minutes.
Yep.
And that was after the second go around, so we already did one, then, then we changed it to get to the nine twenty eight. Then I was on the phone with you one night.
Well.
I was in a QuickTrip parking lot for forty five minutes and I finally, listening to you. And I finally just said, Gary, you don't have to do this, you can walk away. And then you apologized. But you know, you were pretty excited about it and I just didn't know what to do anymore. I don't know, I would, we, we did exactly what you wanted the first time. And then, then we just kept going, now where there's gonna be a couple of buildings and then we're gonna, we're gonna beautify them and stuff.
I don't know where five million dollars came from, there was never five million dollars, it was three million. So the only thing that we did after we walked through the place. And we met with one of our, the one that we're gonna develop the building site for, they asked if they could, if we could keep one or two more of those buildings. That's the first one I had inside the buildings, we asked if we could repurpose those buildings. We're gonna stick two hundred fifty thousand bucks to have a million dollars moving those buildings and putting them on the backside of the property, the north part of the property. And that's adding more tax base.
Yep.
So, so.
So, uh, September eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, six thirty PM, board of trustees meeting called to order by myself. This was a special meeting, uh, six thirty-three we started. Uh, went in the closed session. Uh, came out of closed session. Uh, and uh, the motion was made. A possible action on closed session items. Uh, we talked a bullet point on sales strategy for fifty five hundred Schofield Avenue, no action. And then purchase and development, um, proposal for fifty five hundred Schofield Avenue, motion by Zagami, second by Hardinger. The lower asking price of fifty five hundred Schofield Avenue to four hundred thousand dollar. With buyer raising buildings plus conditions on value of development agreement of two point five million. Assessment within two years, an additional one point five million assessment within three years. And an additional value of one million assessment within five years for a total of five million dollars increment motion carried. That was on nine eleven. That happened, that's an, that's an open. It's two point five, it's, I, I just said five million, I didn't say the first year. That, that, that one was a total of five within. Within five years. And then on nine twenty eight. Uh, motion by Ermeling, second by Cronin to approve the revised offer from Gary Garn to include the following terms. Purchase price of a hundred thousand dollars, buyer will demolish buildings, seller will remove all asbestos and environmental hazards. We did guaranteed three million dollar assessed value for entire parcel land and improvements with taxable value in two thousand twenty-four. Be paid in January of two thousand twenty-five. After this, after that approval, then it was determined that we couldn't get that and we, we pushed it down another year after this was done.
What was the reason for pushing it down here?
You said you couldn't do it.
We couldn't get permits and get the building built by that.
Doesn't it, you couldn't do it, so we were gonna go another year to, to make that work. No other incentives, buyer has responsibility to work with Done Right regarding encroachment, seller to remove salt from salt shed by November fifteenth. And uh, seller to remove castings and manhole covers. Payment in lieu of taxes if assessed value was not met by two thousand twenty-five. Um, five yeses and Jim Pincel voted no. Uh, and Hardinger, we lost him on the Zoom, he was on Zoom that night, when it came back in the open session, we lost him. So those, those two were both, those are both two opened records meetings minutes.
So what, what has changed thus far? The developers agreement was exactly the way it was, the, everything is approved.
Was I? I, I don't, I don't believe so. Was it? Uh, well, no, uh, well, here, no, nine twenty-eight, all buildings are to be removed.
You want us to take all the buildings down, I'll be more than happy to take them all down. We'll, we'll, we'll throw the, we'll throw the building.
But Gary, you said no, you said you, we wanna keep a few.
I asked if we could, I asked.
Mm-hmm.
And this plan that we submitted in was if we could and if we would, we don't know that for sure yet. We labeled those buildings as if we could repurpose those on the site and rebuild them. And stick another two hundred to five hundred thousand per building it, to put them on the backside of the property, on the north side of the property.
So.
For incubator business.
So nine, not the nine twenty-eight. A, uh, uh, motion, uh, five with one descending. Um, the, the change there would have to be a twenty-five and then with a twenty-six tax, correct? Cause you can't, you can't do it twenty-four and be paid in twenty-five. That'd be the only difference on this then, you say, all buildings will be raised. Everything else.
I don't have a problem, if you guys want the buildings, well, we'll take the buildings. I don't, not sure whether we put them in the scrapyard or put them in the back and add more tax base, but let's not put them in the back and add another million dollars in the tax base. Let's put them in the junkyard. That's the smarter thing.
I'm at a loss to where, where, where we are now.
So, so Martin.
Yeah, Joe.
One question, you say you're gonna convert to green space. As a taxpayer, right, I have a problem with that. Because the whole idea is replacing. The tax laws from this location, right, I don't know how much it would pay in taxes. But the whole idea was to get something back on that property to replace the tax base laws in this property. So I, I'm having a hard time understanding how you can tell or you can turn it into green space that, that doesn't develop any income? I mean, no tax income?
I, I agree with you, Joe.
Yeah, we're, we're using green space as it would be ready, shovel ready, it would still be. The, and it'd be for sale, yes.
So just an FYI, since, since it's public record that one of the trustees would rather call A W direct, since I gave them the name off. And sell directly to them, they're not gonna come. They will not come.
This, uh, staff and this board will not be calling A W. Don't, I, 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 I'll tell you that flat out, they will not be doing that. Nope.
Is there another need?
No. So we're going three million dollars.
So is there another, is there another law?
No.
Well, help me out as a taxpayer, understand this. We have the opportunity to get a guarantee of getting some taxable fees back.
Now, now I am gonna open it up, alright, because I'm not gonna answer those questions, I am gonna open up the rest of the board. And uh, the trustees that voted no can answer that question.
Please, tell me what the thought process is here.
My thought process originally was to sell the parcel as it is. Um, and that was. Shot down by the board and the board collectively, the board isn't one person, the board is seven people. And it's that way for a reason, cause not one guy here has all the answers. And it was collectively decided that the entire parcel should be reconfigured, um, and this was. For Kristen and Jennifer's recommendation to reconfigure the parcel completely. And raise all the buildings so the entire parcel could get used to its highest and best use. But those words were spoken by both parties highest and best use. So, put the whole slate clean and start over with whatever that looks like, there's nothing impeding anywhere in the way, there's no, we have this manhole cover here, we have this. Building to work around there, it's completely green space, not green space in the fact that it's part, but green space in the fact that it's a shovel ready, completely blank slate. Seven point four two acre parcel.
That's not really gonna be true there.
Okay. But minus the buildings was the, I think the intent that, Kristen, maybe you can.
We had one building that was saved in our mission.
No, 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 I'm saying that the, the uh. Idea of, of property density, right, or how, what, what was that concept, you, you can probably say it better than I can, cause I don't sell buildings.
Four, seven acres to get the highest best use with as much density and taxable value as we could.
Not to, to chunk it off or part and piece it out.
Right.
Does anybody have a calculator? Anybody have a calculator that you can take the math, the site, that was fourteen acres? And divide it, what we pay per acre for this property?
Uh, we paid one million dollars.
Yep, divided by fourteen acres.
I'm sure Jessica's probably got it done already.
This is how I approach, this is how Greg Schmitt and I went through this, I'm sorry, I was wrong. Mark, let me explain to you that I can't get an answer out of anybody here that's telling me what is this property worth? Nobody can give me that answer because I wanted to pay the difference, I don't want anything for nothing, right? I can't get that out of anybody, nobody's giving me what the property is.
Seventy-one.
So I assume.
Seventy-one thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars per acre. Yep.
So when I, when I spoke, um, so we got a property right next door to the, to the west, or excuse me, to the east of there. That's just sold and that was being assessed at forty-four thousand. So then I went and looked at Done Rights and I looked at Arrows, both of them were being assessed at fifty thousand dollars. I made a mistake of not looking across the road or on Schofield Avenue. To see that Schofield Avenue was being assessed at a hundred thirty thousand. So, I called and, and said, hey, I'm sorry, my mistake, it was my mistake, my bad, I did not look at this. I talked to Greg Schmitt on it and exactly what I presumed was a hundred thirty thousand, well, he educated me on the front edge. So that three point five acres across the front, I did that times three point five, right? So that three point, three point five acres times a hundred thirty thousand, that equals four hundred fifty-five thousand dollars. I did the three point seven five acres in the back, I did that times the fifty thousand. That's a hundred eighty-seven five, which is the total of six hundred forty-two thousand five hundred dollars. I was gonna pay you a hundred thousand dollars. And then what was three fifty, stored on the two hundred thousand dollars difference. That's all I was asking for, what is that gift? What is this gift that they wanted, and I kept asking if you, if you ask the attorney, um, he'll, 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 he'll say, what is that dollar value? How do I, how do I, as a business owner? When you ask me for a ten year developer's agreement, how do I know my risk reward? How do I know what that dollar values? I don't, and I never, and I still don't have to this day. So I came up my own values. And we're at six hundred forty-two five. Is, is that what you guys want for the property? Okay, assessed value for it, I would have, I would have done that three months ago, we wouldn't be going through this. I don't want a developer's agreement. I don't want ten years on my tail. But nobody can give me a number.
So, it's extremely quiet up here and um, it's public record, we voted in open session. Barb was absent, uh, but Hardinger, myself and Cronin voted for it.
Okay, so my question is, I guess, what else say, Mark, and I'm about to interrupt you. What are, what, what's wrong with the most, can you explain to me what your feelings are, and what, what, what are we missing? What are we missing with doing this?
We weren't even getting fair market value for this project.
What is fair market value?
I don't know. I asked somebody price the property, nobody answered to that question.
How do you sell?
Somebody has to price the property, we don't know what it is. We have an assessor.
Yep.
And he did it about nine hundred thousand dollars.
He did it based off of everything being a hundred thirty thousand dollars.
Whatever, that's his opinion.
Well, his opinion is if they split the property like it's, like it's gonna probably happen, he would assess the back at fifty.
I'm not gonna argue with you, as far as I'm concerned. There is no forfeit, there is no value on this property and you weren't paying the fair market value.
So why didn't you say that right away, why?
I did.
You did it, you made a motion to approve it.
What I, what I made a motion to approve it is not what came back here with the developer agreement. And don't argue with me.
You're saying I'm not arguing with you.
No, yes you are.
I'm not, I'm asking you because.
It's a public property, it's not a personal property. It belonged to the people of the village of bust.
Then maybe you can answer.
And we have to get the fair market value for it.
Yeah, what is?
Anything less than that is not acceptable.
Mark, you, you sit on the board, right? Where, where is the, where's the fair market?
That's our job.
Yeah, what is the?
I made it our job.
What is it? I don't know, that's what I did.
I think Tammy had it assessed that, uh, she put it on the market for one point two.
She was told to put it on the market for one point two. She said it was too high, and eight hundred was too high, she said. Well, so help me understand this, so now the village is gonna put up three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Then hold that property. And that's gonna be done when, how much longer will it be that it's, it's very big?
Gary, can I, can I ask you if you were to put an offer out, what that number was that you just read off, please?
Yeah, you've got three point five acres, uh, up in the front. The, the, the assessed value is a hundred thirty thousand.
An acre?
Yes, at the front, three and a half acres, that's four.
Frontage on Schofield, right?
Yeah, that's four hundred fifty-five thousand dollars. Three point seven five acres in the back. Uh, fifty thousand was one eighty-seven five. So that total is six forty-two five.
Six forty-two five?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Jessica?
The assessed value is not the fair market. Our assessment ratio right now is like point eight, point seven, we have to go through a reassessment, so you can't just keep throwing up.
So what, what is assessed value, this is what you pay for it?
I don't.
Uh, the assessed value I thought was eight hundred and some thousand dollars.
Okay.
And I think we were getting, right, is what I understand. Yeah, it was eight hundred something, yeah, we paid a million.
And what were they asking for, for, for three years, I think, I'm selling?
One million dollars.
One, one point, is that one point two or one point four?
It was, well, when I called, uh, Terry up in Arizona, uh, from a board meeting, uh, he was asking a million dollars for the property for sale. I had him throw in, I asked him, we'll buy it for a million, but you have to throw in the corners. And he threw in the two corners and we got the whole property plus those two corners for a million dollars. And it's how much more land than our other. Yeah, half, so half again we got here. And we were able to build, uh, uh, clean. And because I could not imagine, uh, building this building there and then shifting employees around, moving stuff around. I've done it several times in grocery stores and it's, it's unbelievable, it's unworkable. And this, we could build here and then just move over and then, you're right, we gotta sell that property, get it on tax.
So the property here was, uh, half of what, basically half of what you're asking for over there. Actually, you're asking more.
Uh, we were asking more for over there.
Yes.
Versus here, correct?
Yeah, you're, you're, what you basically asked was four million, or say a piece of, a million.
Well, I, I, I didn't think that was a good, I mean, I didn't agree with that, but that's what we did.
Yeah.
We put it on the market for one point two.
I'm just, I'm taking out, that was three, seven acres versus fourteen acres, yeah.
I, I, um, also, I just gotta clarify something, I never heard Tammy tell this board that that was too high, never. She might have told you, she might have told other people, but she never told this board that one point two is too high, never.
Yeah.
No, no, she didn't.
She, when she, that's what she told me.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, that's fine, but she didn't tell us, she didn't tell us, no. So I, I mean, I would have got, it would have come to me somehow.
She also wasn't told that it is a development.
I'm sorry?
She also wasn't told from Keith that it is a development.
Yeah, I, if we would have got nine or a million dollars, we would have took it. With no development.
I don't believe there was any contingency.
No, there wasn't.
No, I don't wanna say phallastic price, but if it, if it was listed at one, two, and, and you came in and stroked a check for a million dollars, I don't think there would have been.
There would have been nothing.
An issue with a developer.
It's, it's the, the development agreement and, uh, the three million dollar, uh, increment was, uh, the hundred thousand dollars. I mean, at one, at one point, it was a hundred thousand with no demolish. And then you went up with the demolish, yeah.
Because right now, we're putting on the tax base most four times, but this was taken off.
Jess, Gary, I'm not trying to be a stick in the mud here, can you, can you elaborate on that, please, a little bit?
Okay, so when Steve emailed me, he asked, what kind of increment will we be missing out if we choose not to develop this, the two and three million dollars? Um, first I had to correct that, we talk about increment a lot, and that's really not a good terminology for a property outside the TIF. So, remember what increment is? There's the base value and you're in the TIF, there's the base value, the assessed value that's there. And then any improvement cycle on that property after, that's the increment, so it's the difference between a base and the additional value. When we're talking about property outside the TIF, it's just additional value. Um, the revenue of the village would not be receiving if the three million dollar development didn't happen, was ten thousand eight hundred and five dollars. Um, that revenue increase is just one year. The state, we are limited by net new construction, so we have over a billion dollars worth of value in the village. And so a three million dollar project is point zero zero two, is very small increment, so the total value increases ten thousand dollars. And what I added in there, I said, to put it in pers- perspective, it would take forty-six years of a, of three million dollar increments every year. To raise five hundred thousand dollars. Um, so when we talk about, oh, we'll just get it and then we'll get the value, I cringe a lot because. I'd rather have a half million dollars, I can spend it on a cloud truck when it would take so many years. To get a half billion dollars with a three million dollar development, so that's. I forwarded that email to a lot of people, I, it just really, it puts it into perspective. We, that property would be paying eighteen thousand dollars in taxes, don't get me wrong. And, but we don't get to increase our revenues that much because of the state level limits. They, you say, well, where's the rest of the money go? Well, when that property pays eighteen thousand and we only get a ten thousand dollar increase, the other properties in the village decrease that difference. So that eight million dollar, that eight, eight thousand dollar difference is sprinkled among a decrease in property taxes that everyone else would be getting. I mean, it's not significant, right? But that's, that's how the state levy limits work, so I just wanted to, that was the email I, trying to clarify. What the impact was of a three million dollar project.
So Jessica, so are you saying that if you put three million dollars of, of, uh, taxable. On that property that you're, only manage, is only gonna create income?
I have a one-time revenue increase of ten thousand dollars. So, if you were to put three million dollars on that property right now, twenty twenty-six, because it's already twenty-four. Um, I get to increase my revenue ten thousand dollars.
Where's the rest of the, let's just say there's eighty thousand dollar tax, what is that amount?
Well, school.
I don't understand that, but so you're saying that doesn't help you, you're saying it's only, it only brings you ten thousand dollars to the village?
Yeah, a one-time new revenue, then. At ten thousand dollars, we'll get absorbed in operations. It's because of the state levy limit, so like I say. That net new construction is, I take your three million dollar project divided by our equalized value, which is one point five million dollars. And then that's my net new starts, net new construction, so point zero zero two or whatever that small dollar amount is. That small percentage, I get to multiply by my last year's levy and that gets me ten thousand dollars.
So, how do we explain that, because I'm not a tax accountant. Very, very smart with what you have, tax, a hundred percent, trust and agree that you know what you're doing. If I explain that to the average taxpayer that says, you took eight fifty off and you're putting, and you're turning down some of that's putting through running guarantee now.
It does not impact my revenue significantly. I mean, that's all I have to tell them, this, we paid seventeen thousand dollars in taxes when we bought this property. I can't replace it. And that property was taken off the tax roll at seventeen thousand dollars. You can't just put it back on, there's no apples to apples, the state doesn't allow you to just plug the hole with something new.
So, but, but we, we would get with three million dollars taxable, right? I mean, wouldn't we get about forty some thousand dollars yearly?
No, we get ten thousand dollars of new revenue.
I, I know, but, but how, how do we tax, uh, those buildings, those businesses? I mean, we, we must tax it like we taxed this one that was before us.
You're saying that it just goes into the whole pie?
I, I know, but I mean, you, you can't say we're only gonna get ten thousand, I mean, I get, I under, I think I understand your new revenue. But, but they, a year after year after year, if we have three, a, a million, three one million dollar buildings there. Won't each one of those be taxed at a million dollars? Assessment, well, I mean, like this one here was assessed at eight hundred. So let's say we had.
But remember what I was trying to say, so they're gonna be paying eighteen thousand dollars in taxes to the village western.
Right.
All that property, but.
Well, let's talk about that, it's not really eighteen, it's probably closer to ninety thousand.
The village western, I'm just talking about.
Yeah, just the village.
I know, well, I know, but, but then the seventeen thousand here with eight hundred thousand.
So.
So, that seventeen was also diluted also, and so thirty percent of the seventeen we got.
Yeah, right.
Right? Right, okay.
What she would probably say, Mark, is you probably were getting, Weston was probably getting two thousand off of this.
No, 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 no.
Right?
We were getting thirty percent of seventeen five.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah, we're about thirty percent.
Yep.
So what, well, what?
So we would be getting thirty percent of a three million, let's just say one building went on over there, we would be getting thirty percent of whatever that was.
Probably fifty five hundred dollars.
Uh uh be about forty seven thousand dollars uh we'd be getting in taxes for that. It'd be basically three times this, so three times seventeen. So about forty seven to forty eight thousand. Um and then thirty percent of that is what the village would get. So we would get a yeah, fif- twelve to fifteen thousand, something like that, yeah. Yep.
But with the levy limit and the net new construction, you only realize that ability to increase the one year.
Yep.
After that, any additional that that would be in a a se- increased assessed value, but not be a part of your net new construction, just helps bring everyone's property taxes down. Same thing, you go through a reassessment. We're like, it, your your mill rate is gonna go down.
I know, but if we keep bringing up this this thing at eight hundred and some thousand, we keep saying seventeen thousand, we have to be able to say whatever those buildings are too. I get, I I don't actually understand that whole thing. So I, I don't even know where to go with it. I mean, I'm staff probably does. I know Jessica does for sure. But um you know, if you had three one million dollar buildings over there, you can't tell me that we're not gonna forty seven thousand versus seventeen here. I mean, I, that that to me is apples to apples now, whether.
Mark, we just, we have two buildings out, we have.
Hmm, yeah, three million, three million.
We have a third one.
Yep. So I I will say, um as as wild as we look like we stubbed our toe up here, I take great pride that this board argues, it discusses, it doesn't always agree, hold on. Um uh this, this is one time that we, you know, kinda moved it around. You wanna call it wasting time? I might even agree because we spent a lot of time on this, but it is what we decided. And then uh um I'm gonna defend everybody's decision, uh whatever their reasoning was, because none of us make our single decision, all seven of us do together. Even if somebody's not here, even if two aren't here. It's what this board does and uh is not sometimes, like right now, I'm not having fun. I normally have a lot of fun up here, like today has not been fun.
I I completely understand.
Not at all. Oh, except, except we're gonna uh merge our police departments. So that's a lot of fun. Yep, so, yep.
So my question is, is what is the property for sale for?
I think at this moment, we're going to take a break while we put the buildings, um while we move that into a shovel ready site. Get it prepared to be a shovel ready site.
Well, till the village is gonna spend three hundred fifty thousand dollar new hole. Who tear that hole up? So you're gonna take that out of what?
I I I mean, I, that is what in we agreed that we would move forward to to that degree, but I I think if an offer came in, I don't know what the numbers, no idea. I just don't. Um I I have a number that other people have different numbers.
I I will, I will personally say I am not opposed to hearing another offer at all. I don't think anybody here should be opposed to hearing another offer.
I wanna know what assessed value, I mean, the market value of that prop. I've heard numbers and that you could, you probably gave us a better number than what I've seen. Um I mean, we keep saying, we don't know, and it it sounds so.
I think part of that is zoning, though, isn't it, Jennifer? Because we don't have a zone and there's.
They're like, they're like zoned right now.
It doesn't matter. We can change the zone.
This is.
I understand that.
You guys have never come up with what you wanna see there. That's been the biggest issue. I mean, he's proposing commercial on one piece of it and I do industrial on another, so.
Is that an issue? Is the increment an issue? Or or is it just the dollars? And then we don't care what goes there.
It's up to you.
That's what I'm saying. You know, here, here we are. We're trying to get a catalog. We're trying to get something that that may uh that may
Commercial.
Have more growth. I don't know. Hotel could do. Same thing, yeah, but um.
Just kinda in that category. If it's some of its content industrials, so.
But a development agreement, all day long, I would take price over that. Development agreements are a pain in the butt.
Would you like me to reach out to Greg and just have, I mean, Greg assesses all things in the village, right? So that would imply some trust on that, what he would put together. And I would be happy to reach out to him and see if maybe he would put together a memo to say, yeah, this is what it would be if it was retail, this is what it would be if it was light industrial, in his best estimation as an assessor. Well, I would like to know what it is as it sits and what it would be without anything on it. That's what I think where the wat- water is getting muddled here is.
Because I find I'm very naive or whatever you wanna call it. I've had people that come up that while you're selling it, that property should go for a lot of money.
I've 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 had three or four um uh calls on that, uh some from the board. And I have said, but we're ax- asking for a three million dollar, you know, assessed value, and every one of them backed off. Every one of them. And one, one that this whole board knows very, very well, said, well, that that's a big difference because um they have property, a lot of property in this, in this community for sale and others. And they were very nervous that we would sell this, sell that for that price, and then where do they go? And I says, I know, but you're not asking for any kind of increment on it. You're not asking for three million dollars. And she's, she just didn't know that. She's she's only heard a hundred thousand.
Well, my thing is, I couldn't even tell them what the value was of.
That question a long time ago.
Yeah.
So you asked the question, Keith, Jim did.
Yep, he had a bad luck.
Yeah.
Um so.
He did this once.
You already did this once. You, they asked, um Keith asked Greg, Greg, um Greg came back and this was May thirtieth. And this is where you got the nine hundred thousand dollar value that you had on. He said, Keith, I am knowledgeable of an accepted offer amount for a pretty much vacant lot down the street a mile and a half. And that was, that's basically the site that they're putting up, the mini maxi store.
Mini maxi, okay.
It hasn't closed yet, but there is an accepted offer. Can I just say that based on the accepted offer, the village's seven point four two two acre parcel, assuming the buildings are demolished by the village, should be worth maybe somewhere in the neighborhood of nine hundred thousand. The deal isn't done yet, but it is close. I probably shouldn't give any specifics, but this info is directly from the seller, so.
So nine, nine hundred thousand dollars.
If we demolish it.
Minus three hundred for demolishing, brings it to three, to brings it to six hundred.
Right, you guys went.
Yeah, you said six forty two.
Six forty two, we're two hundred thousand dollars off. Guys, if you need to give it three hundred thousand, I'll give you the three hundred thousand. No development agreement, I'm on my way. I'll be taking the buildings on.
You're saying six forty two five and you're gonna demolish the buildings?
I don't know. I wanna make sure that you understand this.
Six, six forty two minus the three fifty for the devil.
Nope, nope, nope. Greg said nine hundred thousand, nine hundred thousand dollars to the lake property down the road.
Clear.
And I believe that was uh Clarence's property. And.
Said if the buildings were demoed.
Hmm, read that again, please?
Yeah, so he said if the buildings were demoed, it'd be nine hundred. So if you take the three hundred off, that's six hundred.
Six hundred, yeah.
Yeah, you are.
Six forty two five, right?
Six, six hundred and you take the building itself.
So if you guys remember what I asked was the difference, I'm putting two hundred thousand dollars on it. That's why I was trying to do this treaty. How long this is for? I was trying to figure this out. Nobody could give me any answers. I didn't, I was like, I didn't know. I think you understood where I was coming from.
Yeah, no, I think there was a difference in opinion as to the fair market value. So I mean, you had, you had your comparables and uh, you know, Mr. Schmidt had his. Six forty two five and you didn't.
Can we, we can't really do this.
I don't believe that.
Yeah.
I don't believe that you could use that to see more.
Sunday.
Well, maybe we could, we next Monday we could. So um I I believe we have a consensus here. I haven't gone on this side. But I I believe six hundred, you demolish, that deal, no, no, no agreement.
I think what I've heard a little while ago is that if there was another offer to be presented, it should be presented. And I would think that would come to the board in writing and then would come onto an agenda.
And today is Monday and uh our agenda will come out uh Wednesday, Wednesday slash Thursday.
Or it's not six hundred, right?
It's six hundred a new demo. Yep.
All right, this is okay.
Nope, Greg said it's it's worth nine hundred thousand dollars cleared.
Yeah, the buildings.
So we we, so nine hundred thousand dollars cleared, so you take the, it it it's not cleared, so take three hundred thousand dollars off of nine hundred. Yeah, oh, you're saying three fifty. I've heard three hundred. I've heard two fifty. I have no idea.
Keith gave you a number of three.
Yep, I know he did. He was all over the board. You know, you could sell some of the buildings. I have no idea what what some of the raw materials were. I'm sorry? We can repurpose them there, but not somewhere else. So just saying.
Do whatever you want. It's a city state.
Okay, so the building, the building that was here was uh taken apart and reconstructed somewhere else.
What it is, kind of engineered in the state, was to those structures. Those buildings are just small. Unless it's.
I I think that's where we are.
Yeah.
There we are. Okay? All right. Thanks for your attendance. Um I know everybody here except you.
Uh yeah, I'm well, I'm ready to see pictures in my side.
Oh, you're the one?
Yeah.
Okay, I I I've just seen Brian talk about you and uh he's all impressed with you and stuff like that. So good, yeah. Oh, six pages.
Oh, okay.
He works with Brian.
I couldn't quite understand.
Ryan Kloski.
I'm.
Yeah, yeah, nice to meet you too. Devin, you said?
Yeah.
Yep, okay. You tell Brian that um we did not know that that was Amazon. And I'll keep, I'll keep going there all day long. You can beat me up on the front page, but uh he's wrong.
Okay, I'll tell him.
I know.
I have no idea.
Yeah, all right. Well, I still have a dog in that, so, yeah.
That's moving along.
Uh moving along, uh we need a motion uh for uh the.
Well.
No. You have it here? Okay, go ahead.
I'll move a second.
Make the motion.
Okay. I move to approve her governmental study and advisement agreement with the village Rothschild.
Second by Wylon, uh motion by Cronin, second by Wylon. Uh anymore on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Uh so Carrie, um you will all be part of the board. Yeah. But um you services together. I am giving all of your children, not a chicken. Anyway, um okay, so where's my? Yeah, it's cute. It's real cute. It's worse. Sprinkles on me. I'm gonna go to.
Glitter.
Oh, it's definitely glitter. Yeah, good.
Is there any as people?
Uh okay, remarks from trustees, uh Jim? I have not. No, no, I was just, I'm over here. Jim, I I call you for remarks. Okay, okay.
If you would like one, then I don't know, no, save it for next week. That's but.
Are you here? None, uh Wylon?
Yeah.
Uh Cronin?
No.
Uh Zagami?
No, thank you.
No, okay, early?
Well, actually, I can make a comment.
Okay.
Um because I was not at the meeting, I and I must say, I have trouble every so often in the meetings that I'm here that there's so many people talking over the top of one another. There's nobody being recognized to talk. They just all chime in, listening at on tape is even worse. I didn't know half of the time what was being said. And I guess I really wish that we would wait to be recognized by the president before we start talking.
Anybody can run for this seat, just so you know. So anybody can run for it. So, yeah. Yeah, I I I agree. I have a hard time paying attention to it. It just gets a little wild.
Right, and if you, I don't know how many times Ruchay had to say, excuse me, can I finish my set?
Yeah.
And I thought, wow.
I um, I I don't know i- if I'm able to do it. I don't wanna like apologize and then say, but but uh at sixty four going on sixty five, I'll do my damnedest to try to get there. I will. And then I I believe uh having a conversation with our new administrator, as well someday, I'm not gonna say new, but I'm gonna still say new. Um we 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 have never adopted, we have adopted uh several different uh rules, but I believe we need to adopt Robert's Rules of Order. Everyone around us, everyone everywhere else is, and we don't. So, yeah.
He's not all you.
Uh it is me. No, it's it's me too.
No, 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 no. See, people should respect each other.
Yeah.
And allow to finish your talk, then we can walk as a starter.
Yeah, I I I'm not watching. I'm not seeing.
Well, or go in.
Yeah, if I see somebody roll their, roll their eyes or something, then I see it right away, so. But I'll I'll try better. I really will. Okay, I'll say.
That county, they got that, you push the button.
Oh, county schmody, yeah.
I thought that was dumb.
Yeah, I I I.
Yeah.
Half the time it doesn't work. I've heard her.
Well, no, I.
No, I will. I will. Um I I do wanna say congratulations to uh um the trustees that are running for uh election uh unopposed and drawn in alphabetical order. Pretty wild. So it's Cronin and Hardinger and Wylon. I think that's pretty wild. I am sure you all showed up for the the big uh card draw. But uh I called Pam and she's old. Yeah, so.
Pam let me draw the names.
What?
Pam let me draw the names. It's very exciting.
I know you love elections. And uh other than that, uh Happy New Year old, right? That's our first meeting. Or, yeah, and then next Monday, we have a agenda will come out this Wednesday, so. Um am I forgetting anything? No. Um I'll I'll fill you in on uh Schofield and Rothschild next week, okay? And I'll and I'll continue to do that. Maybe a placeholder. It'd be not bad for agenda. I'm looking for motion to adjourn. By Wylon, second by Cronin.
Sorry.
What? Yeah. On discussion.
Can we, can we put uh Robert's Rules of Order on the agenda for the Monday meeting, please?
Did, you know, I I said.
It was said. I don't think it was clear.
I don't, she actually brought it up.
Okay, great.
Staff referrals, you missed that.
There you go.
All right. It should have been under staff referrals. Anything staff referred?
And to make you happy, I believe the Humane Society is back on the chat as well, correct?
Oh, God.
Maybe on Monday as well. Has not resolved.
I'm looking so forward to that.
I know.
It's gonna be awesome. I might bring some vittles or something. Okay, uh so motion by uh Wylon, second by Cronin. Uh anything on discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor to adjourn? I also Carrie, we are adjourned at uh eight thirty.